Microphone when you speak, make sure you sign in on the clipboard, speak clearly into the microphone. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting will be February sixteenth at seven PM in the Matthew Thornton Room, which is this room. With Michael absent tonight, I need to appoint an alternate and my score sheet says that Nelson's a little ahead of Jeff. So we'll have Jeff as a voting member tonight and that'll even things out quite a bit. That brings us to Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Tim, what have you for us?
A couple of things this evening. One, going back to late last fall, there was a United States Supreme Court case, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. Gillian had recently attended a workshop regarding that topic. Has to do with sign ordinances and constitutionality. Just giving a quick overall summary of what the Supreme Court's decision was. They basically stated that a municipal ordinance that placed stricter limitations on the size and placement of religious signs, different limitations than they would on other types of signs, is an unconstitutional content-based restriction on free speech. Basically, what the Supreme Court has done is they've said that content-based restrictions are subject to the strict scrutiny doctrine and this really expands what that is. Ordinances have to be narrowly tailored to further compelling government interest. Making the decision a little bit more complicated, even though it was a nine to nothing Supreme Court vote, there were four separate opinions. One majority opinion and three concurring opinions, all of which had different rationale. So this has been a boon for municipal attorneys and legal scholars in terms of what communities really need to do. Looking at our ordinance, Gillian and I suggest that we might need to take a look at the permit not required section of the signed ordinance and at the very least add a separability clause, which would allow us to say that if a court for some reason found any part of our signed ordinance unconstitutional, it wouldn't invalidate the remainder of the ordinance. Our legal counsel is ready and willing to assist. They've actually got a legal memorandum brief that they had sent out to most of their member clients and communities. The question I have for the board is, given the somewhat contentious history of dealing with signed ordinance here in Merrimack, all of which predates my employment, and also given the other items that we're working on in terms of zoning, the economic development overlay, the work on accessory dwelling units, both of which are in the works in various stages, what priority does the board think the staff should give this? And how quickly do you want to see something put forth for your consideration before we send something up to the town council?
My own opinion is, Tim, I trust your judgment to sort those out and whatever you think is best is my opinion on that. I don't think that we've got anybody screaming to go sue us over some signs yet. And I think that we would appropriately attack these kinds of projects if they came forward. In essence, even with Arizona's, I read that case, even with Arizona's ultimately flawed rule, if they had decided to take a pass and not enforce their regulation against a particular plaintiff, they wouldn't have.
We've actually chosen to do that in one particular circumstance. Since this case happened in October, there was the, I'm sure most of you are familiar with the sign that one of the neighbors on Valley View Drive had put out on his property, informing people about, "Come see me if you want to talk about what's happened out here." There was a complaint regarding that and after consultation with legal counsel, we opted not to enforce the signed ordinance in that particular case because we would have run afoul with this particular case.
So with that, you could control your own timing in terms of what priority is, as far as I'm concerned, but if others think differently or want to prioritize differently.
I'm sure there was.
Yes, we didn't enforce that one either.
No, before it became a painting scheme, it actually had two four by eight signs.
Yeah, it was a sign before it became a house.
Okay. Anything else, Tim?
One other item. One of the things that did come up when Gillian, Robert and I were discussing putting together, preparing for tonight's meeting, we did after the packets were completed and put out to the members. We do have the draft agenda for the next meeting and on that meeting, there's at least one project that we'd need to do a regional impact determination on. At this point, I told Robert and Gillian that I didn't want to proceed to put that in front of you sight unseen without it being in your packet. The question I have for the board is if you'd rather us give those to you in advance, even if it means not putting them in the packet for you in advance, are you okay with having those before the meeting where we're actually considering those projects?
Yeah, I think I'm okay with it. Yeah, unless it's something that seems to you so obvious that it's going to be a regional impact, that we've got to get notices to other towns and all of that, then control that agenda that way.
That's it for, I have one other thing, but I'll save it for item six on the agenda.
Any questions by members of the board for staff? Nelson? Your microphone's not on.
I misunderstood your answer to Tim as to how you were advising him we wanted to proceed.
Sure. As we have on several occasions in the past, we've had the decision about regional impact at the same time or night that we heard the main application. And I think that it was the consensus of the board that that's okay. However, if Tim spots one that he thinks is certainly going to be a regional impact, that requires that towns get notice of this and an opportunity to come participate in it. And so if he thinks it's likely, we'd go in that direction, he ought to treat it differently.
Okay, I would agree with that and thank you.
Essentially, what I've heard was that if it's relatively straightforward, it's okay to just bring them the night of a meeting without them being in their packet if it means you don't have to do them the same night. So for example, tonight, something on the next agenda could have been taken care of tonight rather than taking care of it in two weeks.
Is that okay?
Thank you, I understand now.
Any other comments or questions on the, any other comments or questions on any other matter for staff? Seeing none, we'll move to item three on our agenda.
If I could suggest, Mr. Chairman, we might want to take care of number five, if there's anybody here in the audience for that.
Yes, thank you for the reminder. Let's just go ahead and reorder the agenda and attack number five. The applicant for number five has asked for another continuance to our first meeting in March, which is the first. So let me read it into the record and then we'll jump on it from there. Item five is Brett W. Vaughn for the Brett W. Vaughn Revocable Trust as the owner and Allison Jenkins as the owner. Continued conceptual discussion of a seventeen lot cluster subdivision on two lots in the R1 Residential District located at 123 Wilson Hill Road and South Greater Road, tax map four A, Lot twenty-three, tax map five A, Lot one. And the item has been continued from our January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. What's the will of the board with respect to the applicant's request to continue to March first?
Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the applicant's request to continue this item to the March the first meeting at seven PM in the Matthew Thornton Room of Merrimack Town Hall.
Is there a second for Alister's motion? Second by Desiree. I would add with no further notice to a but.
Oh, sorry, yes, no further notice.
And other than that, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to grant that continuance. With that, back to item number three on our agenda. Matty Schweri for La Terrasse's Restaurant. Applicant and owner, compliance hearing is required by conditions of approval for a restaurant located at Fort AD DW Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial Elderly and Town Center Overlay and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map five D, Lot, five D three, Lot forty-six. Tim, is there anything that we should know before we hear from our applicant?
Just to summarize the background from Gillian's memo, as you're well aware, this project received conditional final approval back in September. One of the precedent conditions of that approval was that the applicant appear before the board for a compliance hearing after legible architectural elevations were submitted. Those have now been submitted. So the board tonight should be providing any additional feedback to the applicant regarding those architectural elevations. There are a couple of remaining conditions of approval that still need to be addressed through staff. But this is one of those items that needed to take place before the staff could continue and finalize the other items that need to be taken care of with the applicant.
Okay, so we're here to review and pass judgment on the architectural elevations? Great, thanks. Desiree?
I'm going to recuse myself.
So let the record reflect, Desiree's recused herself. I'll appoint Nelson as a voting member for this agenda item. And Mr. Schweri, please tell us what's going on.
Good evening, gentlemen. The last time I was here and you guys asked me to meet the condition and I try my best to do that and I submit all the paperwork to the town and I'm waiting for your answers.
Okay, very good. So this is, I remember when we sat last time, we had something that was very similar to this plant, these elevations, but we couldn't really see it because it was printed very lightly. Is there any changes on these other than getting ones that are legible and that we could read the, and see the information on it? Any questions by members of the board for Mr. Schweri? Nelson?
Yeah, so with regard to the architectural elevations, what colors are you planning for this? This is all black and white here.
For the elevation?
What color will you build it in?
What color will the building be?
The same color it has now, only the front's going to be a glass. It has a green color on it, light green.
Green on the siding and the?
Yes. Same color, not changing the color on the building.
I didn't know from the plan.
Any other comments or questions? Nelson again?
Well, yes, I have other comments regarding the plan itself. But I'm satisfied with regard to the architectural views. They seem to satisfy our requirement. It's very similar to the building that's there and I have no problem with it.
Okay, so when you speak of plan, you're talking about the site plan?
I'm talking about the site plan, yeah. Because.
So that's the other thing we've got in the package. What are your comments or questions about that?
Well, a couple of things. There were things that were brought to the attention of Mr. Schweri in the past during our review and they don't seem yet to have been addressed. One of these has to identifying the parking spaces in the parking lot. They're not delineated in any way in this plan. The plan refers to removal of certain asphalt and replacing it with grass in a crosshatched area, but the crosshatching is not visible in the plan copy. And the third thing had to do with the sidewalk easement B, so called. It's not clear to me what the boundaries of that easement are. And I think that one of the things we wanted to do was be sure that that easement was satisfactory to the Department of Public Works. I gather that's something that is yet to be done. But I want to point those things out at this time and once again to the applicant that we expected to see that, I expected to see it.
I remember the discussion on the sidewalk. Nelson, show me what you're looking at with respect to pavement being removed in a crosshatch area so I know what part of the plan that is.
Okay, let me see if I can find it now. It is in the left-hand side of the plan. There's a sidewalk easement B, do you see where that is on the left side? Then it says remove large rocks. And then next it says remove paving, replace with ground cover represented by crosshatch.
This is in the front, this is in the front, right? Yeah, we can't do anything with it now till we start doing work.
Oh, I didn't expect.
No question, we're just trying to figure out what part of the plan is.
What part is crosshatched?
There's no crosshatch, Betty. So we can't see what you're referring to.
I think some of the issue just may be the copy of the plan. The line work may be just so faint that it's not appearing in the copies that were made. I will, again, we will make sure that the final plan copies address those issues and will be legible and complete before we would bring them for signature by the chair and secretary.
That's what I wanted to be sure of, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Yeah, I think all three of those things are.
All three things, Tim. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Tim, is any action or vote required in the context of a?
Nope, the only requirement that was put on the notice of decision was that this hearing take place. It did not specify any action needed to be taken. Now that this hearing has taken place, that will address and satisfy that condition of the approval.
With that, you've satisfied your condition of approval.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in and showing us.
Just one note, we did receive an email back from the town's attorney with a couple of minor comments that Gillian will be touching base with you on for a couple of small changes to the easement language. But we'll be coordinating with you and making sure we get everything all set.
Thank you very much.
One other question, nothing, not planning board related. Do you guys, do you have a sense of timing for when your restaurant might be open?
All depending on bank finance and this is when we get all the permits done. I have some money already in place for the business and we're going to finance the rest through the bank.
Okay, terrific. Do you have a target date that you're hoping for?
I'm hoping for beginning of winter.
Beginning of winter, so about nine months from now? Okay.
Roughly.
All right.
Six could be nine.
All right, best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, I wanted to be sure that Tim is on board with the fact that we wanted a review by DPW or?
That has taken place.
What?
That has taken place.
But he hasn't seen it since you've changed things.
The revised language is not material to the area that Public Works agree with. It's legalese that needs to be added to the easement, otherwise the easement was all set and ready to go.
The easement hardly shows, doesn't show on the plan.
Again, it's the legibility of the copy. I think that's really ultimately the problem we have with the plans that were submitted is that the darkness of the line work that's, I believe is there, just isn't copying because it's not. It will be taken care of and we, again, we will not bring this for signature until we're satisfied that everything on the planning board's conditions have been addressed.
Ross, thank you.
Thank you.
So Desiree rejoins the board, which has Nelson back in an alternate position. And that brings us to item four on our agenda, which is Greenfield Management LLC for Greenfield Farms as the applicant and owner. And we're here tonight for a conceptual discussion of a proposed single-family cluster development located at Wire Road, Whispering Pines Lane and Pearson Road in the R Residential Aquifer Conservation Districts and the one hundred, five hundred, and five hundred year flood hazard areas. Tax map seven C, lots twenty-eight, thirty, forty and forty dash one. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Again, briefly, just to summarize the background on this before we get into the discussion with the applicant. I'm sure at least some of you are familiar with this project. It goes back several years. This was back in front of the board. In two thousand and seven, there was a conditional approval granted for a twenty-four lot cluster subdivision. That project never received its final approval. There was, been long been issues with, in terms of achieving the connection to municipal sewer that's required for the cluster development to take place. In the back, in the packets, you should have background memos and minutes from previous meetings that hopefully have helped to shape the, and frame where we are tonight. The applicant has continued discussions with Public Works. It's our belief that at this point, the proposed sewer connection and design is consistent with the updated town sewer master plan and that Public Works has conceptually given the okay to move forward with design on the project. They have also acquired some additional property in addition to the land that was previously proved in two thousand and seven. So the conceptual discussion here tonight will involve the land that was originally involved plus this additional land. And lastly, as a note that before we finish tonight, I'd like to get some consensus from the planning board on. When this project was initially brought forth by the applicant, True Engineering, which is no longer in business, was the engineer for the project. CLD, who was our peer review consultant, has acquired all of the intellectual property of True Engineering and they were involved up until recently with the design and work on this project. The applicant is obviously now working with Meridian Land Services. However, the applicant is requesting and staff generally agrees with that because CLD had been so involved with the design of the project, it probably makes sense that we utilize the services of a different peer review consultant when this does formally come before the board in the future.
Thank you, Tim. Familiar looking fellow up here, go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us.
As Mr. Kasich let you offer to know.
No comment.
You're part of the Clinton campaign.
Anyways. For the record, Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services representing this application. Client is Greenfield Management LLC. And this is simply for a preliminary discussion. No decisions necessarily. We just want to introduce where this project has been briefly and where we're going to take it. As Tim's memo and introduction stated, it has a bit of a history on this. Currently, we are pursuing a sixty-six lot subdivision. Cluster residential development. It's going to have both sewer and water and it's located in the R Zone. It's comprised of four parcels, which are not showing on your screen. It's online. I had submitted with our application a exhibit on GIS. It's, that's perfect. Seven C, Lot twenty-eight is the primary parcel. It's the largest one. It's about ninety-seven acres. It's owned by Swenson. It was part of the original cluster development. Seven C thirty is adjacent to that. It's thirteen point four acres and it also was part of one of the original developments as well as seven C forty dash one. That's five point five acres. So the previous developments, which were occurring in two separate plan sets for some reason, were concurrently involved in the planning board process and design and so on from about two thousand and six to two thousand and nine. About fifty-eight lots, I think, at that point and they were substantially complete. They went through quite a few of the planning board hearings, community development review, peer review. They actually both had AOT permitting from DES. It was quite far along. Except for the issue with the sewer. Sewer by the plan was not desirable by the town. And the applicant at that time couldn't work out a way to satisfy the town requirements, especially with regard to master plan, general larger connectivity for the public. And so quite frankly, the project stalled. Stalled to a point where it was withdrawn from the planning board consideration and sat for a number of years until I think the spring, late spring of two thousand and fourteen. And there was a bit of a revival, but it really didn't go anywhere because there was no substantial alternative for sewer. Just so happens that I was involved in a project around this time that was bringing municipal sewer from Bedford Road up Pearson and into a development we did with Northview Homes. Through that evolution, it became a possibility that what if we were able to connect sewer through that project using a siphon like had been part of the sewer master plan that Wright Pierce had done? And maybe we could actually get over to Brenda and serve this side, this area of the community. And lo and behold, math worked. Sewer is able to get there and we have a plan that's nearly out of the town as far as the wastewater department, about to go to the state and be approved. So that was the big hurdle from where we, where the project had been before my firm got involved. And at this point, now we're substantially there on the cusp of saying, yes, a cluster residential can happen at this property because all the parts and pieces of the infrastructure are now there.
Ken, if your presentation's giving you some technical difficulties, let's take a minute and get it straight because it'll help us understand.
Yeah, well, I do have old fashioned backup.
That's okay, take a minute. I mean, it's, something's coming out of your computer because I can see Meridian Land Services, but it's frozen or something.
It's just not getting from my screen to your screen.
Here comes the technical help.
Here's the pro. Don't type me up too much.
Reboot the computer, that usually works with me.
I had to spill something on it. Spill something on it.
If you don't mind, I'm going to go to the old fashioned.
Okay, please, whatever you think is best. I just want to make sure you get a chance to put the presentation you want to put.
Are we on? Yes. So as Tim had pointed out, that True Engineering had been involved in the early stages. This is the first part of a subdivision that had been contemplated and pursued originally. And then, again, I don't know the history, the backstory on why two separate plan sets were pursued simultaneously. But then this, if you want to call it another phase, was added to that. So that was the prior fifty-eight lots as currently through the process. And like I said, you know, the plan sets and sheets were substantial and it just couldn't be completed because they just simply couldn't overcome the sewer issue. So here we are now. We were involved in the sewer design for the extension and then asked to stay on and then consider what could be done with the overall property now that sewer has been addressed. And the first item that happened was the collective owners picked up what's known as the Villanov parcel here, a fourth parcel to add to the overall design. That parcel is fourteen point five acres. It's map seven C, Lot forty. Evaluation of that parcel and we did our own survey work as far as the base work goes. So the topography, the wetlands, et cetera is now our product. And we were able to determine that in combination with the previous fifty-eight, there's now a total of sixty-six lots. I happen to see in the planning board memo that there was a question, the application, when we first submitted the application, we didn't know exactly what the total lot yield would be. It was to be determined at that point. Subsequently, we've been able to determine that the overall parcels, all four of them, yield a total of sixty-six lots. So that's not a question anymore. One real benefit of adding this parcel was prior, and I'm going to flip back for a second so you can see the difference. And this Villanov parcel is in this vicinity here. Strangely enough, as I looked at this concept, it really was a little puzzling to me why this existing right-of-way that had been established over years of planning as subdivisions occurred off of Whispering Pines was never really used and accessed and configured into the overall approach. For me, it just wasn't very logical to leave that disconnect that way, even regardless of acquiring what we now call Villanov parcel. Well, having that parcel, there was no question in our mind that that was the route to go to utilize that right-of-way that had existed from the nineteen seventy plans forward and then have a through road over to Wire Road. We didn't want to make it too straight because too straight would be more of a raceway freeway type of a feel to it. We wanted to make sure that it had enough curves and reverse curves through the property, which yielded this main through road with then we have six separate cul-de-sacs off of that in little pods, if you will, of residential pockets. So overall, our Lot number one starts around and wraps up with Lot sixty-six. Power line easement runs through the middle. And so what you have is over, the overall project total area is about a hundred and thirty acres. This sits on maybe thirty-five to forty. So from a open space requirement of fifty percent, this is well in excess at this point. Thirty-five to forty acres of footprint over a hundred and thirty, that's a substantial improvement. Because what happened during our work is being able to disperse some of the lots over here, we pulled back from Babusak Brook. This had been, especially with some of the drainage, had been down right adjacent to the flood plain and fairly close to the wetlands. We were able to pull some of those improvements back and make this a little bit more tight on the plateau. Keep it away and have more of the open space in a contiguous fashion. And I will touch on, and intermittently in the planning board memo, there's a list of several points and I've sort of already had in my mind, built those into my presentation. So I guess if I leave it somehow, you can come back if you like. As far as the design goes, when we first came up with this general approach, I sat down with both Kyle Fox and Ken Connelly. Obviously, Ken Connelly's involved from the sewer standpoint to make sure that he feels comfortable that this can work. This is gravity, all the way from our sewer manhole through here, downward Spring Pines and out all the way to Brenda and the siphon. It's all gravity to that siphon. So that is really a fantastic thing because prior to that, some pump systems might have been needed for even residential down in this pit area. Also from the DPW standpoint, they had hoped that we tried to be able to connect some of these and make sort of internal loops. Unfortunately, that just added a lot more road without any benefit of any more lots. And so that's a losing proposition that you just can't continue to build extra road. And it really didn't further the purpose of the configuration. So at this point, we've left it with these short cul-de-sacs. But really, that really led to is, I don't think we need to. But really, that really led to is, I don't think we need to ask for any waivers for road design or drainage on this, which is uncommon nowadays. Generally, we are looking for something. It may be that the one waiver we're looking for is to have slightly less percent grade than the road requires. The requirement's one and a half percent. We might need, because this is so flat, we might need to ask for a relief to be slightly lower than that in some sections. That's a minor waiver item. I don't even know if it's needed yet. Other than that, I can't anticipate any other waivers and certainly no variances with this particular concept. So, I look at this and say, this is a drastic improvement over where it had been back in the two thousand six, two thousand nine era. Not because my office is involved necessarily, just because the sewer came together, the Villanov lot became available and the combination of those two and the reconsideration of the whole layout, really just the timing was right to have a good look at it, make some changes. And now, it actually, I think, it functions a lot, lot better than it had in the past. One of the comments in the memo was obviously we have to handle street numbering and hydrants and the like. Obviously, no problem, no question there. Also, we have to make our way through the rest of other town departments, especially Conservation Commission. Although, I will add, there's no wetland impact on this either. It's pretty rare nowadays you have this amount of road, just over four thousand millimeter feet with sixty-six lots and there's no wetland impact. That's remarkable. Yes, we'll have to have a AOT permit, but there's no state subdivision either because this is sewer and water. So, I hate to say it, but this is one of the easiest sixty-six lot subdivisions I've ever seen. I say that now at the beginning, I hope to convince you.
See what it looks like in the end.
You've just cursed yourself.
It's when you don't say something like that, it's gonna come back. But really, when I look at this, the terrain, the way it's laid out, I'm pretty pleased at this point. And it's really, it's just a discussion tonight, obviously, just to reintroduce you, say that it had been in a somewhat of a bad place in the past. It's now had a little breath of fresh air in it. It's now had several issues revolved, resolved and it's much, much better in its configuration orientation. And there's no question from our standpoint that it does meet the purpose and spirit and intent of the cluster residential development ordinance. And I'll pause there briefly. I do have a couple other things to add, but I just wanna get some questions answered if you have.
Thank you. I did have a couple as you went through it. I know you explained it, but I didn't quite catch. Who is it that wanted you to make loops and connect the roads?
Primarily, I won't name the specific name, but that was DPW.
Okay, so they're thinking about plowing roads without turning around at cul-de-sacs?
Correct. And I told them in good faith, I would seriously take a look at that. But the function in crossing PS and H easement twice unnecessarily, in their view, they don't like that either.
And probably would take up some of your lots as well. What's your lot size for, what's the smallest of the lots?
Smallest is about ten thousand, eleven hundred, eleven thousand perhaps. It's right now, these are set up in a way that we believe the lots are gonna be generally like this. Our job now is to then handle the drainage. We get a, cut a profile, see where some of the water needs to go. But the average probably will be about twelve thousand square feet.
So, quarter acres-ish, something like that. When you talked about not having enough slope on the roads, you mean the requirement to have a little bit of slope at the intersection of the?
In general, a minimum road slope for any, not just an intersection, is one and a half percent. That's fairly flat, but we have an extremely flat site. So, we will be making some grade at some points to make sure our water sheds where we want it to shed. But sometimes it may be slightly less than one point five percent. We've asked for that waiver in the past with Kyle and received it in a limited basis as long as the circumstances really warranted it.
All right. Other comments or questions? Nelson?
Yeah, I have some questions. First of all, the public service going through there, is that an easement or is that a separate ownership?
No, it's in easement.
In easement. There are some consolidation going on here prior to this.
Yes.
You'll have to consolidate and then re-subdivide.
Technically, yes.
Yeah. Tell us what's to the, just to the south of this, this is sort of a blank area there on your.
Here?
Is that developed? Yeah?
Uh, yeah. Brenda Lane comes out here and then there's a short cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Is that Brenda that continues through there? This is a compilation of plan sources, mostly GIS and then internally our plan. When we come back before you and it's a notice to butter hearing, we'll have much more to show you. And you can see the representation of each of the homes and the adjacent streets as well as this.
You can kinda see it on this thing if you got one of those new package.
Yeah.
Brenda Lane does have.
Okay, I do see that now. I was looking at the, I was looking at his plan up there. The land to the north of this, the other side of the Brook, is that part of the, that's not part of these, is that part of these parcels?
Yep, all the way to the Bedford line.
Okay.
In between Wire Road and Pearson Road, that whole section of Bedford Town Line is part of this project. And it's all open space.
That's open space associated with these? I was gonna ask you about open space or recreation space associated with this development that you're talking about tonight. Could you talk about that a little?
Well, at this point, if the overall acreage is about a hundred and thirty acres and this footprint is between thirty-five to forty acres expected, so that leaves us with, if you wanna call it forty acres, then we have ninety acres of open space, quote unquote.
And that's where you're getting it, that two C twenty-eight, the seven C twenty-eight?
Lot twenty-eight, well, lot twenty-eight currently does come all the way down here as well down Wire Road. So, the remainder of it, whatever the lot number becomes, because you're correct, we have to merge four tax map lots and then re-subdivide and then there'll be one larger contiguous open space lot. There might be others in here too. I'm not sure how that's gonna work yet, to disperse, but they won't be in as large of a singular lot perhaps as the rest. So, that lot that goes along Bedford Town Line, all the way up to that, that's going to be open. There will be, I'm missing saying, the Swenson Farm, the farmhouse, the farmstead right there, there will be a lotland adjustment with that to, that was part of the arrangement, part of the original deal that it's really not germane to the open space subdivision and the new roads and lots and improvements, but some amount of land will be conveyed as a separate lot to be left with that homestead, which technically is mostly in Bedford.
So, the open space associated with these homes is on the other side of the Brook?
It's actually on both sides. If this lot forty-four, you bought this lot directly in back of it, that's, that's open space. And it extends in contiguous with the open space behind fifty-five, which extends and is contiguous with the open space behind sixty-six. It's on both sides of Babusak Brook.
Is there any crossing of Babusak Brook proposed?
If you wanna get wet.
Well, no, without getting wet.
There's none proposed right now, not today.
Yeah. I mean, just to make the recreation land or associated with this accessible, that's.
There is, there is connectivity via the public roads if you look at it that way because as soon as you cross the new bridge at Babusak Brook, there's a little turnoff right here and all that frontage here is along open space relative to this development. Same thing on Pearson is if you hit up Pearson just before you get to the Town Line, there's a field right there. That's part of the land for this development and you could conceivably park there and you could enter the open space of this development.
I would think you would want some access to the people living there, to those properties.
I understand the point. It's something that really comes around as the, as people buy into the property and they're homeowners and there's a homeowners association and the homeowners association then has to pay for upkeep and maintenance of some level of crossing. Is that an amenity or is that more of a burden that they don't wanna take care of? But it's a recreation item that can be considered in the larger picture. I can bring that up.
I know that when we've done the cluster subdivisions before, we always sort of thought of that open spaces being recreational space, but I'm not sure what our ordinance actually calls for. I think it's just open space and.
It allows for provisions for recreation. There's actually a short list of items that can be included.
But it can be, but it's not, so, but all of that area that we're talking about being open space is not, it's also relevant to your plan in that that's what you've used to create your yield plan that got you your six C whatever lots.
Yeah, you take the gross and you have to take out the floodplain, the wetlands, slopes over twenty-five percent. In the end, then you have to dedicate fifty percent of your lands for open space at a minimum. What I'm suggesting, without considering the acreage that might go with the Swenson piece, that there certainly, we're well over fifty percent at this point and I expect it to be greater than fifty percent for sure.
I think what's not, what may be clouding or the issue is that when your predecessors produced the plan, which we know is quite different, there's, the, their plans included a recreational area and a rambling trail. I perhaps didn't quite put it that rightly, but a trail where you could ramble around the site. That was part and parcel of the, the original application was sort of one of the selling features of it. Given that there isn't anything hit on your plan, and I know it's only conceptual, I think something, I think this is really where we're going, is that there was a deliberate attempt to make a sort of recreational and a walking trail around the site. And I think it's something you might like to consider because I think it was, it was one of the selling features of the original plan. But that's for you, Ken.
I haven't, we have kicked some of the recreational aspects around, but there's certainly, this is too early to include them, so.
But I, I just thought we should bring the point up that it was there in two thousand and seven or whenever it was we last looked at this thing.
Sure, understood.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Jeff?
The land above the Brook, if I understood what you said, this is all part of the same project. We would never expect to see any development over here.
You, you wouldn't be able to.
That's okay, that's what.
Because it would be part of the open space and the open space would be protected through covenants and restrictions, absolutely.
The easement, the power easement, is there requirements for homes being separated from the power line at certain distance? And do you know what that is?
Technically, no. As soon as, as soon as it's outside of the power line, then it's not a proper line that's subject to the five foot cluster setback necessarily. So, technically, somebody if they wanted to could build right up against it. Especially on the east side, we built in additional fifty feet of separation here. That was our choice just to give as many natural tree buffer as possible. It's not necessarily, at this point, the key's on the west side though, unless we can work something out. So, the nature of the lots and how each one of these little cul-de-sac areas worked out at this time, we don't have it on both sides at this point. We're hopeful to increase that.
There's something, there's two lines that run alongside of sixty-one and sixty. It looks like it might be a road. What is that?
Sixty-one and sixty, actually, I probably should have added this in the beginning. This is an old borrow pit. Same pit that was used and in past years, it had been used for some laydown and storage area for at least this bridge reconstruction here. And it's currently actively being used for two bridge reconstruction projects in town by the town. So, I don't know if it's a lease, a borrow, or I don't know what the legal term of how it's being used, but the town of Merrimack is currently using this pit for bridge projects in town. So, that's an access point to the old and currently used pit. Although, it's not a, used in a pit sense now, just storage and laydown. I haven't seen that document or documents if they exist, so.
Are there other comments or questions? Are there specific things you need to get feedback on from us about in this?
I guess the general layout and approach for one, which after we've brought the plan around, we went, saw Tim and Jillian and Robert as well to sort of give them a preview of what we were thinking about, get some feedback. I'm pretty comfortable where we are as far as the general layout, the roads, the lots, the potentials for recreation, our open space. I'm pretty comfortable with all of that. As we looked at the project though, and this is, this is the big thing that I'd like some feedback on, we were looking at some of the definitions or purposes of the cluster and it specifically noted stimulates new approaches to land and community development and diversity of housing opportunities. And we wondered, quite frankly, maybe we could do some sort of mixed use here. Mixed use in particular being elderly. So, I grabbed the elderly ordinance and said, well, wouldn't that be wonderful if somebody buys a house with their family here and their kids, but over across here, this pod was elderly, fifty-five and older empty nester and maybe the grandparents could move over here and be close by and maybe this could be more of a community in that sense as opposed to just a number of house lots. However, while it fits the ordinance, sewer and water and it has a lot of the amenities and it's gonna have sidewalks and all of these different parts and pieces, your zone for elderly is incredibly small. On this side of Daniel Webster Highway where we are, from a point that's measured at the intersection of Babusak Lake Road and the highway, one mile away is the limit in a circle, in an arc on this side. It's two miles if you're next to the river, but on this side, it's only one mile. That doesn't go very far. In fact, our site's more than two miles away. And that's the biggest restriction to this because in our minds, to create a bit of a diversity here and have a whole different feel as a mixed use neighborhood, that would be ideal to consider. We really, really like to pursue it. We did speak to Tim about it. I'm not gonna speak for him. Those in the town that we've spoken to have had positive feedback, not necessarily endorsements at this point, but fairly positive feedback. And we'd like to know if that's something that the board would like us to pursue. Not that this is an endorsement by you, but in general, do you feel like that's something that might make sense to at least consider? It will require reverence. I don't know what the density would be. There's a lot of questions. This is, this is a point where we have brought it to through thought process, but not taking action. And I just, I would like to run this plan through and say, is this, is this an area perhaps, and I'm just picking this side of this, this portion, that could be converted into like an empty nester elderly? Not, not some sort of care facility, not, we're talking about single family units, whether they're singles or attached in a duplex, not that anybody likes that word, threeplex, four, four unit building, but not in a facility, not care type things. I guess that's, that's one consideration that we'd like some feedback on. Is this something that the board thinks they may be willing to consider if we were to pass judgment with the zoning board?
Could I offer a first comment? I mean, I like the concept of having maybe some elderly ones, but if you're suggesting you're the grandkids at that end and we're this and no thank you, oh, no, but it's far away.
Needs a little more separation for.
Preferably the grandkids would be in Amherst, but go on.
So, physically, something that looks more like either townhouses or duplexes or apartments for over fifty-five located proximate to freestanding house looking things on quarter acre lots?
It could be freestanding house like ranch style housing, two bedrooms. However, maybe it's two smaller ranch footprints connected. This is so early that this is all wide open for what if? It's more the principle of it as opposed to the actual unit type or style, except to say that it would not be multi-story, you know, facility to drive in with concrete here and, and, you know, meals and all that types of facility.
Okay. I got to start my questions on that with a question for our historian here. When we created our elderly overlay, which is, as Ken described it, kind of funky shaped half circles around this area, what, what do we have in mind that made us decide that was the place to put it and not elsewhere and all of that?
The concept was to make it close to or even within walking distance of the business area in town. Because one of the things that you wanted to have access to the elderly was the business community and be able to walk to the store. You know, this would still require an elderly to jump into their car and to go get the loaf of bread, which the idea of clustering it in one, in the center of town was to avoid that. And, you know, in, in some limited ways, we've accomplished some of that. I happen to be a beneficiary of one of those places right now where I'm living. And I find it very convenient to be able to walk to.
A couple of places.
Yeah. And so, that's one of the features that we looked for when we laid out that elderly. So, I'm not opposed to this in principle, but I think the devil's in the details, Ken. And you'd have to think it through pretty thoroughly. And again, I think the juxtaposition of multifamily with the single family might not be so good commercially. That's my opinion. I think the standalone kind of houses or maybe duplex, you know, would be more acceptable. But that's just off the top of my head.
Two, two responses, if I may? Two, two responses, if I may.
Sure.
I expected that the reason that the current zone limitations, the one-mile radius was clearly for, here we are at the town hall, get the fire department and then emergency rescue, the library, all, it made sense.
Yep.
But in the elderly quote-unquote standpoint, the definition is fifty-five and older. Fifty-five is a pretty mobile, empty nester, that this location would not be a problem for that set. Like, like I said, it's, it's, you know, a, a different type of a, a market. And the marketability going to that, you know, that's not necessarily something I deal with as far as which particular unit or how's it look or who's buying it, but I get that point too and I see it as well. And so if this is to be pursued, then that whole market strategy has to be known and, and, and that's why it's really, it seems like it could make sense because this is the, the longer through road with different pods of cul-de-sacs that one of them could be designated in that fashion and it would be there, but it wouldn't necessarily be so intermixed that it looked out of place.
You, you did bring up the issue of the accessibility to the emergency services and that's important for the elderly as well. The ambulance, you're about as far away from central fire station as you can get and still be in town with that location, unfortunately.
There's a few places that are a bit farther, but I know what you mean.
Well, from a time point of view, I think if you.
Great stores further.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Then you had a comment or question?
Two things. First of all, part of the elderly overlay district right now is nowhere near walkable to businesses. It's off of Turkey Hill Road.
That was the.
And it's caused all kinds of problems, but regardless of that, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to having connected buildings, not necessarily a townhouse, but more one end connected to another one offset, something more interesting than a, than a flat-front townhouse.
Sure.
Single-story, ranch-type on that idea. Visually, more interesting.
Understood.
Others? Want to comment? I tend to agree with what Nelson and Lynn suggested. I, I'm open to consider what you want to put before us and I think it would be interesting and would be useful. I guess it's probably not even an issue that would come up, but with this sense of the elderly overlay that we have now being focused on being walkable, I would not want to see a proposal to say, let's add some kind of a convenience store or something over here that people are going to walk to as, as a part of this because now that we've got folks there, they've got to be able to get somewhere. Let's don't do that, which I don't think that you would, but just.
We hadn't even thought about that, but it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, it is. It's a terrible idea.
Columbia, Maryland.
Yeah, there you go.
That, that wasn't.
And I didn't think it would, I mean, it's not like a, a, a single, some kind of retail business could survive on, you know, twenty-five elderly apartments or whatever you call them, whatever we decide that we're going to call them. So I would be open to taking a look at it and, you know, seeing what's going on with it. One of the things that we didn't really mention, I don't know that it necessarily ties in too closely with the idea of elderly housing, but with all, with the brook there and all that you've got going on, you're probably going to see, you know, fertilizer and salt and all those kinds of restrictions come up in our discussion. It isn't a site plan, it's a subdivision, so it works a little differently, but.
Elderly, the elderly would potentially be a site plan, however.
Yeah. Yeah, you'd be a site plan with that. The other thing that I would offer up just for knowledge is before you go too far down the road of elderly, it's not the easiest thing legally to set up, so there's other requirements for it. If, if you've done them before and you know what they all are, then great, but if you don't, make sure you thought about all those things, so.
I've done one, one in Milford and one in Amherst.
Okay. Anything else that you need us to, oh, I'm sorry, Tim?
Just to update the board, I, I know Ken had mentioned that he had discussed and brought this item up to me and my staff. My recommendation to him was to bring it up with the board here tonight at the conceptual discussion. My general feelings toward it were relatively neutral, however, when you look at the goals of the newest master plan, there is certainly an encouragement of the mixture of uses and housing types and densities when you're looking at areas that have access to water and sewer. So I thought that at least conceptually it was worth bringing up and having the discussion here tonight.
And although it's not, and although it's not walkable, you're not that far from what the, the sort of stuff where one oh, one oh one, the Bedford home, it's going, I was going to say Whole Foods, but now it's becoming this new co-op, food co-op system down on one oh one A where the Bedford Whole Foods was. You're not that far from, and not, it's not walkable, but it's certainly short drivable. You're more likely to drive to the Bedford commercial stuff.
That may be true, sure.
Rather than come this way.
And that's a concept that relates to all walkable communities, especially when you start to think of elderly as, what, what's within a mile might be reachable, but start to push beyond that and all of a sudden it's a lot easier for folks to jump in the car, especially if they're going to have to bring something back and, you know, walking over to the grocery store and coming back with a load of groceries. Probably a pretty difficult thing for anybody to do and I, I don't know how much, how often people would do that versus using their car if they had one, so.
And of course, if you've got the kids at the other side of the building, they go and fetch the groceries for you.
Best of luck with that.
Exactly.
Actually, you might find it would be the reverse.
Yes.
Oh, you're home all day, can you?
Can you go and get the groceries for us? Yes, I know what you mean.
What do you guys got in mind with pedestrian facilities and walk sidewalks?
Obviously sidewalks. We had expected we'd be doing some level of trails too, depending, I think one of the provisions in the previous design or in recent designs were trails that had some sort of stations for exercise. We've seen those not be used in that fashion. They, they don't do those exercises, they walk by and then they fall into disrepair. It's the same thing with, with a playing field where a playing field could get constructed, but then somebody has to mow it. If somebody doesn't mow it, it falls into some level of disrepair and next thing you know it's been not being used at all. So we tend to lean towards some of the passive recreation where yes, there's a trail that comes off of the, the road system with sidewalks. Perhaps there's a bridge that can be crossed on the Babusak Brook, but then again, that bridge might be extremely costly and then it'd be subject to its own care and maintenance and repairs, so. Suffice to say, we'll be looking at the recreation options for this as a conventional cluster and then if we pursue trying to add in an elderly component to it, then we'll see how that works too and what's appropriate there. So this, believe me, this is, this is an idea that really hasn't even, I haven't even sketched anything on paper yet. So it's, it's that preliminary.
Understood.
We didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves.
Personally, I tend to agree with your sense of the stations along a walking trail, but benches are a different thing.
Agreed, agreed with that, yeah.
Nelson?
Just a thought, Mr. Chairman, I, I know we've heard a lot over the past few years of the need for recreation space in, in town. You mentioned the ball fields and the maintenance of the ball field might belong to someone else if a ball field was there and accessible to town. So it's something you might pursue if it's of interest to you, but it might be interesting to, to some groups in town I know are looking for ball fields.
Thinking like north of the brook, kind of off of wire road?
Yeah.
Separate from the subdivision? I mean, it, it would be allowed as open space because it's recreation space, it's interesting. Tom?
That's a lug for taking kids out there to play games, but it has possibilities. We are, we may have need for something, the town might, you may want to check with the Parks and Rec director. That's been a, quite a change in that department and, you know, there may be a way to work something out. We're looking at a substantial increase in housing that will likely produce kids that want to have recreation opportunities and play on sports teams. And, you know, the, the facilities right now are pretty stretched, even with declining, declining enrollments and declining participation in the MYA. But the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, there's other, this particular development plus the Flatley property and a couple, a couple of the others that we've seen would probably give us a boost in that area and, you know, just contact Matt Gasparius or, or the town manager.
Okay, well done. Other comments or questions? Since we don't have a whole lot of other things on our agenda item, I assume some of these folks that came might have some desire to weigh in on this, so let's open it up and see if there are any members of the public who wish to weigh in? Going once, going twice, anybody? No? Well, thank you for doing that. If there's nothing else that you need from us, thanks for coming in and presenting it to us.
Well, we've just got to discuss the situation, who's going to be the.
Just, all, all I need from the board is a consensus that you're, that you agree that we do need to have an alternate third-party review consultant for this project. When we get to that point, we can certainly bring that forth when a formal application is put in. The new, the new statute does give the board an additional timeframe to deal with that based on, because it's not the typical review consultant, which is summarized in the memo I put together for you tonight.
But that wouldn't stop you presumably doing a bit of research.
Absolutely not.
If all you need is a consensus from the board for my part for one seven, I'm leaning in that direction.
Go for it.
Anyone else?
I'm not on the board, but I'd be in favor of it.
I, I just think it's, it's a cleaner process to not intermingle because of CLD's past involvement. As limited as it may be, as, again, because this was true, they just kind of absorb truce projects, but still I'd much rather, and I know the applicant would much rather have a fresh set of eyes looking at this.
You probably have CLD saying they don't want to review their own work anyway.
Had this stayed a CLD project, obviously we would not have been able to use them, but in this situation, it's a little bit of a gray area and I, I thank Ken for bringing the issue up and I certainly agree that it makes sense.
Yeah, by no means do I have a problem with their reviews. In fact, theirs are much better than most we deal with. So it's just a perception that there could be an issue which, since this law is on the books, we'll pursue it with Tim and make, make some recommendations for him to consider.
Then ultimately the board will have to make that decision per the statute.
Okay. Anything else you need from us?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Sorry about the technical difficulties.
No.
Turning back to our agenda, we've already attacked item number five, which brings us to item number six, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any other items of concern? Tim?
This is more just a heads up for your meeting in two weeks. As I'm sure you're all well aware of, the Prime Alternative Treatment Centers had their conditional use permit and site plan approval for the site at one oh five DW Highway. They are apparently having issues with the landlord and have officially withdrawn their approval and their application for that particular site and they will be pursuing a different location at three eighty DW Highway, which is the Skyline Mall in the space formerly occupied by Chili Willys. So that application for both conditional use permit and site plan will be in front of you in two weeks.
Thank you for that announcement. Any other items of concern? Seeing none, let's deal with approval of the minutes of January fifth, twenty sixteen. What's the rule of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Lynn moves to approve as printed. Alistair seconds. Any discussion?
Couple.
Nelson, let's have it.
Sorry about that. Page two, paragraph two. The second sentence says, "The brewery would comprise sixty acres slash six hundred thousand square feet of the one hundred ninety-six acre property, an increase of eleven percent." I'm not sure what that is supposed to mean.
Well, I remember six hundred thousand square feet, but that's not sixty acres.
No, it's not.
Six hundred thousand square feet's about fifteen.
Yeah.
I believe that the sixty acres refers to the area that is actively used by the brewery?
Yes.
And the six hundred thousand square feet is the actual size of the facility itself. So if you include the pavement and the area that's actively used by the brewery, that's where the sixty acres comes from.
So their general footprint of area that's not forest?
Well, sixty acres isn't, oh, six hundred thousand square feet would be the building?
Correct.
On the property.
Correct. And the sixty acres is essentially the area of the property that's operated and utilized on a daily basis for parking, cleared area of the building itself. So there's, there's about sixty out of the hundred ninety-six that are actively used on the property.
You want to fix that language just so it doesn't look like.
I think if we just lose the sixty acre part of it, I think you're fine.
What's that?
I think if you just take out the sixty acre part, that.
Take out the six hundred thousand.
Well, the brewery does comprise six hundred thousand, that's the building. The brewery comprises six hundred thousand square feet on about a sixty acre footprint out of a hundred ninety-six acre parcel.
That's clear.
Does that work? Sure, can we do that? Anything else?
Can you fix that up? Yeah, let's see, page nine. Yeah, this is a question more for my recollection. This has to do with the, the section, it's a one, two, three, fourth paragraph down begins Attorney Michael. Attorney Michael said the applicant received a very small compensation from the state for its taking. The plan was to run sewer there. Okay, but the funds dry, okay, I get it now, never mind. I'm, I'm all set. All right, I misread it.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else by anybody else? All in favor of approving the minutes of January fifth as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, seven zero, nope, six zero one with Jeff abstaining. He wasn't there that day. Okay, that brings us to the minutes of January nineteenth, twenty sixteen. What's the rule of the board?
Motion by second again.
Motion by Lynn to approve as printed, second by Alistair to approve as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero one with Vincent abstaining this time to approve those minutes. Not well that day either. That brings us to item eight, which is to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second by Desiree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Thank you everyone, don't forget to turn your microphones off.